Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Rutherford County Schoolwork Session. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance led tonight by Board Member Wayne Blair.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Blair.
Thank you, sir.
Number four, approval of agenda. Anybody wish anything moved? If not, let's go to five, consent agenda. Any problems there, anything you'd like moved? Okay, not hearing anything. Number six, I believe, which is on page five, is the visitors. If we have any tomorrow night, they will be most welcome with three minutes on their time limit. Mr. Director, number seven.
Seven's introductions tomorrow night at some of the new administrators in the central office and in the schools, so. Michael has asked them to appear to introduce those tomorrow night.
Number eight?
Number eight is recognition for Archery and there to come tomorrow night, also from Riverdale, Ohio. And facilities.
Yeah, number nine.
Okay, number nine, the first one is the Rocky Fork Elementary School bid. Bids were received on Rocky Fork Elementary School at 2:00 PM, May 15th, the Rutherford County Schools Board Room. We had five bidders with prices ranging from $26,897,000 up to $32,599,000. The tab sheet is attached for the board's review. R.G. Anderson was the lowest and best apparent bidder, coming in at $26,897,000. Alternate number one, a health clinic, is not being taken since it's been determined not to be needed at that location. They recommend approval, the motion would be to approve, R.G. Anderson is lowest and best bidder, and award the construction contract for them for a cost of $26,897,000. You know, I believe the designs here, Mr. Clardy, you may want him to say something, but our cost per square foot, I believe, is going to be less than what's happening in most places in commercialness.
So, those are good prices.
I'm hearing over 200 almost everywhere, what you hear.
Right, well, I'm hearing 225 now and 235, so we're still hanging in there.
Just for comparison purposes, in the BEP formula, there is a capital component, but it is, we have always used it towards school operations in Rutherford County. The cost factor they have in the state formula is $139.41 per square foot, just F wild.
In other words, that's...
That doesn't surprise me.
No, me neither.
Let alone.
Any questions from the board on Rocky Fork or B?
B is the signs for student safety. As a safety summit held by the Rutherford County School Board, Commissioner Pettis Reed made a presentation on a sign designed by Shane Reed, his son, which will deter potential criminals or violence perpetrators at the Rutherford County Schools countywide. Commissioner Reed is present tonight to make a presentation on these signs and inquire about maintenance and installing them at all our schools in order to deter crime and violence. He feels strongly about the potential of these preventive signs and is committed to buying 50 of them and donating them to the board. Engineering and construction has reviewed the sign and thinks these will be a valuable asset in protecting our students and are prepared to buy more as needed. Recommend approval, the motion is to approve installation of preventive signs as presented by Commissioner Reed and designed by Shane Reed at all Rutherford County Schools for safety of our students. Maintenance will install and purchase signs as needed, combining them with Commissioner Reed's donation. May I throw something in here?
Please do.
The other thing that the state legislature has required us to post is "In God We Trust" at every school. It'll be coming down. I did send that law, I think, to Mr. Reed and Ms. Bush. He talked about he'd be glad to add that to the bottom of the sign. My only concern is this, and I'm not the legal expert here, but I sure would hate to lose a sign if something, if the "In God We Trust" part had to be taken away. I'm not for taking it away, but if some legal situation happens, so I don't know what you legal folks say, but he's probably going to ask me again because we did talk about it. Of course, the state in that law says they'll defend this, if you noticed, too.
We're trying to save, not repurchasing all these signs, you probably would leave it off. Currently, in current law, it says we are required to post an "In God We Trust" sign, so unless someone constitutionally challenges that and some court strikes it down in the future, we're okay doing it. But you never know what will happen at court, you don't know what changes could happen. So, if you're concerned about not having to replace these signs, I would put, I would not put "In God We Trust" on this sign and keep it as a separate sign that we could easily take down should we have to take it down in the future.
If it's decided underneath or something, it might be, just the more I thought about it, I thought, predict the legal piece.
Right, and if it goes to courts, it could be years before that got resolved.
Could we not put it inside the building? Is that a problem?
Well, I think what, I think what Mr. Odom is saying is, is if we spend all this money to buy the security signs that we're talking about buying, and we put "In God We Trust" on the security sign itself, and for some reason, a court says we can't do that years down the road, we would have to replace all the security signs, to take them down. So, we wasted all that money on the security signs because we then have to buy new signs.
Does the statute address where the sign is supposed to be or where they desire it to be?
Central location of the school is visible to students.
So, we could, we could have a sign "In God We Trust" and put it in the lobby of each school.
We could have a separate sign, which is, I guess, what we would do in each lobby of the school. And then if we had to take that one down, we could take it down, but keep the security sign. So, we don't lose our security sign if we have to take it down.
Yes?
Well, first of all, I'll say I appreciate Commissioner Reed for doing this. I think it's a great idea, and one thing I thought of when I saw the signs when he presented them that night at our safety meeting, and I don't remember the exact wording, but where it says there's a armed SRO or security officer, whatever, on campus, since we have so many campuses, i.e. our high schools, where there is more than one, and at some point in the future, I know we would all love to see more than one at middle and elementary schools, I wonder if perhaps it might even be more of a deterrent if we change that language to be plural officers or SROs or whatever, instead of just in the singular. Just a thought.
Not always do the princes with the S.
Exactly.
Well, I didn't get the impression from anybody that we were committed to language for the sign. He just brought that as an example to us, I think, and I certainly appreciated the gesture, which is no, according to them that night, that's about $2,600 worth of signs that he is personally committed to. Now, whether we hold him to that, ask him to do that, share it with him, whatever, I don't think about any of that yet, but I think that's pretty good commitment. And, but I think we could come up with our own language, and I agree with Ms. Moore. I think we, you know, plural is, not only is it accurate, that's a good idea.
Well, and if he hasn't already produced them, hopefully not.
Oh, no, he hadn't, I don't think. No, was there other comments from board members?
I would suggest a number of our campuses will need more than one sign, of course. I would also say that I would hold these two separate issues separately. The statute compliance sign inside the building, you know, and let that be a separate discussion. And I hope the board would be involved as we're considering, you know, what, in what way we will comply with that. But this student safety sign that Commissioner Reed has put forward is absolutely outstanding, and with the possible exception of the parentheses S and the plural nature there, we need to move forward on this, it's a great idea.
I don't think it even specified the height of the letter, which is kind of strange.
It's, no, there's not a lot of guidance from the state on what the sign has to look like for "In God We Trust."
But when that comes, we have a patriotic document wall in several of our schools. Freedom Shrine, and I personally feel like that that would be the appropriate place for that sign to be added, but that's just one person's opinion on a separate and different subject than these safety signs.
Clardy?
I had a point made to me today that would it open up liability, for instance, if you put on that sign, SROs are present, and you only have one assigned to that school, and then something happens and someone says, "Well, where are the rest of the SROs that says you're supposed to have on the sign?" Is that a legitimate argument or...
I think if you have, we have SROs assigned to every school, and if you have a sign that says SROs, one or two, I think either way, we're fine on that. I don't think it's going to change the liability that we would have one way or the other in that case.
Okay, good.
Something Mr. Holliday said, too, something that probably ought to consider. I think Riverdale, Oakland, have at least four entrances each. One of them, I think, is an exit, which is, but you could get a car in there at Riverdale. I believe Oakland has three entrances, at least three, four, come to think of it, five entrances. It could be used as entrances, so that's, you know, theoretically, would be five signs. And so, we're going to need, we're going to have 49 schools, I believe, here pretty quick, so we're probably looking at a couple of hundred signs, I'd say. But I tell you what, I, and I know we're down the road, just like we are on the, on the, where to put them and how many, and the language, and the height of the letters, and all of that, and all that's going to have to be considered, but I guess we're going to have to decide all that at some point. But I think the, I don't believe there'd be any problem raising money from the general public to pay for signs. I believe, I believe they would do that. Somebody would buy one or two, just to help out, and it wouldn't take long to fund those, but that's something that's down the line, I guess. Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Thank you.
If there are no further comments, we can go on in C.
C is a discussion item. Mr. Clardy was attending a meeting the other day with the mayor, and one of the things that was mentioned that, you realize that Blackman Elementary, where the employees' medical clinics, is really two of our portables sitting out there at the side, so he made some comments that they, the county, might be willing to build a brick-and-mortar clinic there to replace that, which would certainly look better. So, he is, was wondering if the board would agree to that. So, Mr. Clardy, you want to kind of tell them where and that sort of thing, and then we'll discuss it if you want to?
Sure.
If you're looking straight ahead at Blackman Elementary School, there's a large fill there on the right, and we've looked at one point at maybe putting an elementary wing in there, just like an annex we're doing at the middle school. But towards the back, up out of the floodplain, straight ahead from the back parking lot, would probably be the best location for it. And then it would be out of the main traffic, it would be back off the road. We could get rid of those two portables that are right there, close to the front of the building. We could also use those portables for classrooms somewhere and, or sell them, or whatever, and buy some new ones.
Throw them away.
Careful there.
So, the, that's the location, and at the end of that long lot, right there, and that belongs to the school, goes with the school property.
Board, questions? Comments?
When they say Rutherford County Employ Medical Clinic, so it's open to all county employees, then not just school system, right?
Yes, that's true. Anybody that's under the insurance.
They're not coming out of our budget.
I don't know, I haven't really discussed financing or anything like that. But we did, there was some money in the bid for that if, in fact, when we brought it forward with this bid that y'all are going to approve tomorrow night, which is not in there because we didn't take the alternate, but then it would have been approved at that point.
You might kind of tell them the range of how much those were to add on to Rocky Fork. It was put on there to kind of get it, so that range would be, what's the cost of the clinic?
The clinic ran anywhere from $236 a square foot up to $294 a square foot.
Is there any crossover implication with our onsite school nursing staff and a onsite medical clinic? Okay, so even where we have an onsite medical clinic, the school nurse, she's not based out of that or an adjacent, she's got totally separate facility, okay, all right, good.
Because they operate hours, we do not have to.
So, there's no reason to expect that a student would ever go over to one of these medical clinics?
Unless it's an emergency or something.
His or her parent.
Oh.
Okay, but not during the school day, not dismissed from class, heading over there or something? I'm just thinking.
We do not send them to the clinic.
Okay, all right.
That's what you're looking for, I think. We do not send them to that clinic because that's, that's not even a part of us. That's furnished by the insurance coverage and all, whoever the bidder is for that.
Okay, I'm just, I, you know, I don't want a detached facility, you know, and the security impact of a detached facility if our students are going to be crossing over there. That's, that's the intent of my questioning.
What size building we're looking at, how many square feet?
Two portables, so that would actually have to have some square footage added to make it adequate for the location at Blackman.
Probably close to half a million dollars, probably.
That price on here, I think the one that they're talking over there would be probably a million or less. It might, it might have to have a thousand or even double the size of that, I'm not sure.
Right across the street is another facility.
What is that facility? Okay. There's additional land there that Rutherford County owns as well. Is it advantageous for us to have it on our property? Is that preferred by our employees, or would it be better for it to be over on Blaze Drive where middle school and high school would be a little easier to get to?
I think the corner lot, it makes a lot of sense.
They have, they placed a fire engine there, and the building next to it is that county EMS, I think, some of the counties. So, I think there's two different governments may own that, I'm not positive about that.
I am.
Okay.
City owns a good portion of land in there.
Okay, that's, that's...
I don't know what portion, but they own some of it.
There hasn't been any discussion that I'm aware of on how such a billion would be paid for. I am of the opinion it would need to be paid for out of the medical insurance fund or prorated between county general and the school board and through building program. There's some issues that we'd have to look at there because of the nature of the building and the source of funding.
Maybe we could do a percentage thing, the number of people we have on the insurance committee in proportion.
That's two out of 18.
Yeah, so, you know, that'd probably be a good deal for us.
Excellent idea.
I'll second.
Any further comment on that?
So, we'll probably see the mayor tonight, we can communicate that we're kind of open to it if they want to look further into it and see what the range might be, then we'll decide, I guess.
Number 10?
Number 10 is financial matters, capital projects for 2018-19 school year, and you're looking at basically what you saw last night that Health and Ed was dealing with. $4,322,774 in projected 2019 revenues be used for the capital projects listed in the attachment. $92,000 will be used for trustees commission. We propose to use $1 million of fund balance committed for capital projects for safety enhancements at our schools. The final list of safety enhancements will be determined after we have gone through the grant approval process with the state for the approximately $1 million in non-recurring funds and $200,000 in recurring funds. Recommended motion will be to approve the 2018-19 capital projects list for Fund 177 as presented.
Comment? Or B?
B is capital funds project Fund 177 in the 2018-19 budget. The capital projects budget Fund 177 totals $5,414,774, with $1 million of these proposed expenditures coming out of account 34685, fund balance committed to capital projects. This $1 million will be used for safety enhancements at our schools. All of the current revenues will be used for our routine capital projects. Recommend motion to approve the 2018-19 capital projects budget Fund 177 for $5,414,774 as presented.
Board?
Was that based on the new penny? Yes, okay. Assessment.
Part C?
Part C is centralized cafeteria Fund 143 for 2018-19 budget. Centralized Cafeteria Fund 143, 2018-19 budget, has $18,585,000 in revenues, $19,981,155 in expenditures, and uses $1,396,155 of fund balance to fund the cafeterias. This fund has a requirement that fund balance equal three months of anticipated operating costs. We anticipate meeting that requirement. Budget motion would be to approve the 2018-19 centralized cafeteria budget Fund 143 with $18,585,000 in revenues, $19,981,155 in expenditures, and uses $1,396,155 of fund balance to fund the cafeterias as presented.
Board? Part D?
D is a Segal High softball building. Segal High School softball is planning an indoor softball training facility. We wish to build this facility to give our softball team the same type training facility as the baseball. The plans for the proposed indoor softball training facility will have already been approved by the Rutherford County Board of Education. Total cost of the facility is estimated at $180,000. Segal High School is not requesting any funds from Rutherford County Schools. The softball support organization for the purpose of building the indoor facility will most likely have to get a loan to cover the cost that isn't donated. We're therefore asking the Board of Education to allow Segal High School to create a narrow and focused school support organization for the purposes of the indoor softball training facility only. The outside account will be managed by parents and community supporters and will be supervised by the principal of the high school and the Rutherford County Schools Director of Finance. If this is a concept that you want to approve, I would probably ask just send me to write us a motion, because I want to see the language in there, narrow and focused and that sort of thing. So, if you approve the concept to do that, you'd be willing to maybe come up with a motion.
Narrow and focused sounds very familiar language, doesn't it, folks? The, the, the terms most likely bother me, but I'd be interested to see your motion.
To the Blackman motion.
Oh, really?
Yes, sir.
Board, questions, comments?
Didn't we spend a lot of time talking to school support organizations about how we weren't going to have school support organizations and everything was going to come in-house, and now we're moving exactly in the opposite direction? One step at a time?
This is what we approved of Blackman High.
That was the first step, and this is now the second step in the very next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This will be a 501(c)(3), right? We just opened that door right back up, we're right back to where we started.
By limiting the scope of it, and basically, we're making it a temporary organization, very limited in scope, so.
I guess I'd like to see that defined as far as the scope and what narrow and focus groups are.
I will have that on the agenda tomorrow evening.
I was thinking if we're going to do it, we write it for the building of this building. When that's done, you don't, you no longer exist. You've met your, your purpose, you know, and it's now dissolved, if y'all want to do that.
I think it's just going to continue popping up, popping up. Once we've done it, it's just going to...
We, y'all, the school board, we a school system, we cannot enter into multi-year contracts or debt. So, if a school has the desire and the parents, and some of it's been done successfully in the past, some of it has not, to co-sign or get loans guaranteed by their assets, not by our assets, that's the only way you can do it unless we were to get into the building and have these groups pay us back, and we really don't have the capital free to get into that area, and we would have to have the county commission's approval to do any of it. And some of that debt has to go and get state approval, so.
If there is a default and the asset is on Rutherford County Schools' property...
There can be no security interest in our assets, in our land.
And yet, they're still going to come after us because the asset is sitting on our property.
It's, it's our asset, under state law, it's ours.
I think if you build on school property, it becomes a property.
It does.
The ownership could come to the school board for dinner or something like that.
The school cannot post any school assets collateral for any loan they take out. So, from a bank standpoint, if the bank is giving a school organization a loan, it's going to be an unsecured loan, and the only loan they will have is the guarantees from the whoever, whatever, parents or organizers they have guaranteeing the loan. It's not a secured loan, if the loan goes into default, they can't foreclose on the school property, they can't take school asset to satisfy the loan.
Can't lean against the property.
They have no lien rights against the property at all under state law, so the sole recourse the bank would have would be to sue the guarantors under the loan documents or whoever signed the note to borrow the money, that organization, which would not be the Rutherford County Schools or the high school. It would be the 501(c)(3) corporation.
Well, if we wanted to go in this direction, then maybe the clear and definitive line is that there has to be some type of material asset. You can't form one of these organizations to raise money to go to the Macy's Parade or, you know, for something like that. You know, it has to be for a physical asset, and then that physical asset is immediately the property of the board, and the debt is the problem of the parent group. Okay.
If someone builds an asset on the school property, it will become a property, it'd be Rutherford County's property, so.
Chairman?
Yes?
And I know this came up during... And I know this came up during the football field discussion, but I am still not clear. And Mr. Sandvig or maybe Mr. Reed can help me, give me some clarity, but I still am not clear on why that money raised by the support group goes into the school and that money goes from the school account designated for that field or designated for that adding facility or training facility, why that account cannot send that money to the financial institution.
That piece can be done, but you can't borrow the money. If, if, if the funds are.
But that never has been part of our topic. We've never talked about us borrowing the money. It's that.
No, no, right, not us borrowing, but we did, in the Blackman High issues of a few years ago, the board did authorize using the school funds to pay off that building, the school funds for that sport.
Right. But I, I still contend, and I contended this during the football field discussion, that, that the money raised should go into a school account designated for that particular project, and that money could be dispersed back to that financial institution for that support group. And, and, and from my, from what I recall, I was told that could not happen, but I just don't understand why it cannot happen for us to make sure that we don't have some of the issues we've had in the past. I'm sorry, I think I've opened up another can of worms, but I, I, I've, I've yet to be.
I don't know if I have the complete answer to your question. I, to the extent you're asking if the school system can, if, will pay money that it collects on behalf of a five oh one C three corporation and holds it in its school account and uses that to pay some kind of debt that five oh one C three corporation has, you know, that's a school system at that point being responsible to pay a debt for some outside organization. So I don't know if I understand, I don't, I don't know if I understood your question.
I'm, I'm, I'm talking about money passing from the organization through the school for accountability and then to meet the debt.
I don't know the school system wants to get in the business of managing other people's money and, and parent organization monies. And that's what, you can debate, debate whether that's good or not, but that's where you're asking a school, um, school officials to do at that point, manage third parties' money.
Are we managing every booster club that we've got right now because we've taken them all in-house?
I, I think the debt is the complicating.
Yeah, we're not paying debt, though. We're not paying someone's note.
Okay, I'm, I just, I just wanted to be clear, and I haven't been, so.
So.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Board, you ready to move on? Revised policies.
Revised policies? The first one is policy six point four oh five, medicines. The purpose of this revision, the state board made changes to its policy on medication to address students with adrenal insufficiency. The policy changes included align policy six point four oh five to the new state language. Recommend approval would be the motion to approve policy six point four oh five as recommended by the policy committee on first reading.
Okay, board, because we were present for the policy meeting, and this, these were the ones that passed, and we'll be voting on them separately tomorrow night. And if you've got a question on that first one, now'd be a good time to say something. If not, we'll go on to one point four oh seven.
Okay, policy one point four oh seven is school district records. The purpose of this revision is pursuant to TCA ten seven five oh three. Record requests may be submitted in person or by telephone, fax, mail, or email. This statute also requires that board policies include the contact information of the public record request coordinator. Policy one point four oh seven is updated to comply with this statute. Recommend approval. The motion is to approve policy one point four oh seven as recommended by the policy committee on first reading.
Travel reimbursement.
Now, is the purpose of this revision, this policy has been updated to reflect the current language of the State of Tennessee Comprehensive Travel Regulations. Recommend approval. The motion to approve policy two point eight zero zero one as recommended by the policy committee on first reading.
Board? Supervision.
Policy five point one oh eight, supervision. The purpose of this revision, policy additions include guidance to employees who either issue an order of protection or to have an order of protection issued against them to inform their supervisors immediately of the order of protection. Recommend approval. The motion is to approve policy five point one zero eight as recommended by the policy committee on first reading.
Questions, board? Substitute teachers.
This is policy five point seven zero one. The purpose of this revision has been updated to reflect the entity designated to maintain a list of substitute teachers. Recommend approval. The motion is to approve policy five point seven oh one as recommended by the policy committee on first reading.
Questions, board? You've got something new on attendance.
I had three twenty this afternoon, TSBA sent us a, um, some revision of policy six point two hundred attendance. You have a copy of what came through my email at that time. Um, and the, the, the purpose of this revision was to update the truancy pos, portion of this policy to comply with Public Chapter seven thirty, three seventy-nine regarding progressive truancy intervention. And the law is scheduled to go into effect September, July one. Um, the policy committee looked at a little slightly different policy. You may want Ms. Bush or Mr. Reed to come up and talk about this, um, because the policy committee did approve six point two hundred, but now the, the recommendation, you can still do what you want to, but the recommendation from TSBA hit some slight changes, but not substantial changes to, in the intent of it.
No, the, the language is different, but the intent is similar. Does give wide discretion to the school district to determine what works best. TSBA sent the email today after feedback I had received from school districts. After reviewing this policy and looking at the one we had passed, the policy committee passed, I, I do believe that the one that we passed may be a better fit for our school district, given how large it is. The TSBA, uh, policy sent today calls for each school to determine their tier three intervention that's going to be implemented at that stage. That would be forty-seven different, we could end up with forty-seven different interventions. Our policy calls for the director of schools to develop and, and implement a procedure for, for that progressive truancy intervention. And so tier three, that would make tier three a little more, um, uniform across our, across our district.
Well, before we go any further with this, um, attendance policy that they want us to consider, we need to decide, um, are we gonna have to have a, another policy meeting? And I understand that Bush, you're not, you're not really, as I understand it, and correctly, please, you planned on another policy meeting at an appropriate time sometime in the fall. Is that correct?
Yes.
Perhaps September, October?
Yes, we have one in the fall. We don't have another one scheduled. We are running up against time constraints, so if the board chooses to have another policy committee meeting to discuss six point two zero zero, we would have to have it within the next week or two. We have the handbooks coming out, so we're running up against that deadline. This policy does need to be in that handbook. Uh, so we're running up against that deadline, but if we could, we could do it, and we would have, we would have to pass the attendance policy if the board chose to, to go with the, the updated one TSBA sent today. Uh, we would have to pass on first and final reading at the next board meeting. That would still put us up against that deadline pretty.
And that's tomorrow night?
That's tomorrow night. We have one more in Ju, June. I don't know if we can make that, but we, we could try.
Dodge?
Correct me if, if, if I'm wrong, the, the one that, the, one that we passed at the policy meeting, the way it is now, uh, would that work by law for July first?
Yes, that would put us in compliance with the statute.
Okay, so this one right here, uh, we can bring us back to the next, at the next policy meeting, whenever you got it scheduled, and if the committee wants to deal with it, then they can.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
And you're recommending the one that we, the policy committee passed?
Yes, I, I think they, they say the, essentially the, the same thing, and Mr. Reed can step in if he, he feels differently, but I think they say essentially the same thing. I think the one the policy committee passed is a better fit for a district, gives more discretion to the director of schools, and will make our procedures more uniform.
So if this passes, uh, on first reading tomorrow night, and then second reading, if, if that indeed happens, we're not in violation of anything?
No.
Okay, and then we, and then we can consider this at the next policy meeting?
Yes.
Well, I think we're all right there. I don't, I don't know why we wouldn't be. Go ahead.
I think the big difference was, it, I, the uniformity is the thing that I'm kind of latching on, that you, you, you're better to have something with a district as large as ours rather than forty-seven tier threes, because that's hard to defend. And Mr. Spurlock and then we kind of get together with that tier three, everybody understands it, and children, we have parents that have children in three schools sometimes, elementary, middle, and high, so it's starting to make sense to me to have stress uniformity. That's my position.
Well, if you would, go ahead and read, read what's, what's there and the approval, and then we'll see if there are questions.
And to prove policy six point two hundred as recommended by the policy committee on first reading, which would be the language in the policy we, committee saw.
Okay. Board?
I certainly cannot support, uh, the policy that was approved in policy committee. I voted against it there, and what it does include is reference to a student court in tier three, and, uh, that is referenced in the statute. It was referenced in the original TSBA recommendation. Curiously, it's not in this revised TSBA recommendation, and, uh, it is the part of this policy that I have had problems with and continue to have problems with because it's an undefined, uh, idea that, uh, that we would be introducing into Rutherford County board policy. Um, we do not have any student courts, uh, at present. I do not know what the authority of a student court would be, how we would field a student court, uh, how we would make use of a student court. And I think that it is ill-advised to include a reference to a student court in our board policy.
Board, any, any comment on, on, um, six point two hundred? Pre-K attendance.
Policy six point two zero one one is voluntary pre-K attendance, and the purpose of this revision, this is a new policy recommended by TSBA to comply with state board pre-K attendance policy guidance. This policy is necessary in order for districts to comply with the terms of the state grant. Recommend approval. The motion is to approve policy six point two zero one one as recommended by the policy committee on first reading.
Board? Student discrimination.
This is policy six point three zero four, and this one is discrimination, harassment, bullying, cyberbullying, and intimidation. Purpose of this revision, Tennessee Code Annotated forty-nine six forty-five oh three, requires local education agencies to have policies that define harassment, intimidation, bullying, or cyberbullying. The current version of six point three zero four does not define harassment. It has been updated to include that definition that was provided in TSBA's model policy and in TCA forty-nine six forty-five zero three. Recommend approval. The motion is to approve policy six point three zero four as recommended by the policy committee on first reading.
Questions, board? Alternative school programs.
This is policy six point three one nine. The purpose of this revision, the state board made changes to its policy on alternative school programs to remove outdated language and clarify minimum requirements. The policy, uh, changes include align policy six point three one nine to the new language. Recommend approval. The motion is to approve policy six point three one nine as recommended by the policy committee on first reading.
Questions, board? Comments?
I'd just point out that this is a policy revision where we're updating and clarifying the language. Language that in other policies where I've stated objections, I'm told that we don't have to worry about that because we don't have to use the student court, and yet here it's very important that we clarify the language. Again, I think that this is evidence that the language that we put into these policies absolutely does matter, and it matters whether or not we include a student court in six point two zero zero.
Any further comment? Okay, as I said, we'll vote on each one of these tomorrow night separately, and let's move on to the last page, insurance update.
Next meeting will be tomorrow, so we'll have an update tomorrow night.
Thank you, Dr. Yan. That was an excellent report. Directors' update. Nothing tonight? Ms. Moore, anything on TLM?
I will defer until tomorrow.
Federal Reg Relations Network.
I will defer as well.
General discussion by board members before we start, if any. Uh, Mr. Sandvig has already left, and many of us, I, I hope, are going to the budget meeting tonight, which I understand is five thirty? Five thirty at the courthouse. Um, also, just so I don't forget, um, I, I know you were impressed, as I definitely was, with the graduations and the, um, I, I went to five, many of you did more than that, uh, some of our staff, every time I looked up, Mr. Zago was standing there, no matter where I was, but a lot of you went to various ones. And as far as I know, our students were just terrific. Um, I, I was really very, very impressed, uh, with how they conducted themselves, and the ceremonies were meaningful and, um, just, I would think, really good. We had like almost five hundred people graduate from two or three different places. I don't have an accurate number of everything, even if I had a hundred and four, I think.
Mr. Zago's got the total?
Uh, Mr. Zago, how many did we, how many did we move along here?
As of the end of graduation, not counting the students who'll graduate this summer, we had three thousand five hundred and ninety-nine walk across the stage.
Three thousand five hundred and ninety-nine. I think I saw every single one of them, but maybe, maybe I didn't. Uh, but, uh, anyway, I just wanted to point that out, and there, uh, I haven't, I've done those duties a couple of times, as has, um, Mr. Estes, but it's been, it's been a long time since I've had to do that, but I can tell you this, as you probably already know, that is a huge job for a lot of people, uh, and faculty members and student, uh, uh, government and others that take part, and I was, I was very impressed. And you're welcome to say anything you wish. I think, uh, tomorrow, just to remind you, tomorrow's five o'clock, right, for the, um, regular meeting and, um, board, general discussion, whatever you want to say is fine. You mean I'm it? That's it? If there's nothing else, um, if you're going up to the courthouse, I will see you up there. We are adjourned. Thank you.